All right, good evening, everyone. I will make a motion to open tonight's board meeting at 6:32 PM. Can I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like a motion to move into executive session to discuss contracts, the employment history of particular persons, and to seek the advice of counsel. Anything else? I don't know if we're discussing what?
Litigation.
And potential litigation. Can I have a motion to move into executive session at 6:33 PM?
I move. I'll second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go into exec. Thanks so much. Welcome, everyone, to the May 6, 2020 Board of Education meeting. The board has been in executive session since about 6:30 PM, discussing contract negotiations, employment history of particular persons, seeking the advice of counsel, and discussing potential matters of litigation. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:49?
I move.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we have the pledge typically led by Holly McCall. Holly?
I am going to actually ask a student from Roaringbrook to go ahead and lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Beautiful job. That was excellent. Thank you so much.
It's our new thing.
I love it. I think that's great. Okay, we will start tonight with the president's report. I just wanted to thank all of you for joining us this evening. We hope everyone out there who is with us is continuing to stay safe and healthy. First of all, I did want to mention that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. It is more than an understatement to say that we and the entire world, I believe, appreciate our teachers now more than ever. Christine made a terrific appreciation video for teachers with video clips from the district administrators, many students, even the Board of Ed. But on behalf of the board, I just want to say once again that we are blessed to have the teachers that we have in this district, and we can't thank you enough for all you are doing for our students during this really challenging time. At our meeting last week, we were still awaiting word from Governor Cuomo on many fronts, including whether schools would reopen after May 15, when we might have a budget vote and board elections, and whether there would be any changes announced in the state budget on April 30, which would affect the budget we approved last week. A lot has happened since then. This past Friday, May 1, Governor Cuomo made it official that all schools in the state would remain closed for the remainder of the school year. While I'm certain that all of us expected this, I know for all of us, it still felt like a little bit of a gut punch. I want to thank Christine for her heartfelt letter to the community, noting that it's painful for all of us not to return, for the students who miss their friends and teachers, the many spring activities and milestones that are missed, especially for the class of 2020, for teachers missing their students, for colleagues missing each other and their workplace. We all want to return to our typical lives, and we all remain hopeful that we'll be able to do that safely in the not-too-distant future. We also received word from the governor's office this past week regarding our budget vote and our Board of Education elections. The vote originally scheduled to take place in person on May 19 will now be taking place via absentee ballot on June 9. This will be discussed in more detail later this evening, and the community will be getting much more information on the details of the budget and the board vote. But every eligible voter will be mailed a ballot with a self-addressed stamped envelope to return it. We are also working on setting up drop boxes so that this can be done in a safe manner, and we are encouraging everyone to please vote, to support our budget, and to make your voice heard. It is safe and easy this year. You do not have to leave your house to do it if you do not wish to, and we all believe that we have put forth a very responsible budget for your consideration. We approved that budget last week, but as we've stated, we have plans in place to remain flexible with our expenditures in the event that state aid changes over the summer. And we also heard from Governor Cuomo this week about a phased reopening in New York State, with Phase 1 being the areas in construction and manufacturing, Phase 2 meaning opening businesses and professional services like retail and real estate. Phase 3 would involve restaurants and hotels, and Phase 4 would apply to the arts, entertainment, recreation, and education. Governor Cuomo stated that he is partnering with the Gates Foundation to develop a blueprint to reimagine education in the new normal. We don't know what that partnership will mean for our school as we know it, but I am hoping that teachers and educators in New York State will be very much involved in this as well. I'm sure we are going to be hearing a lot of different opinions on this announcement. The Gates Foundation does unbelievably incredible work. I, for one, have my fingers crossed that they will help us find a coronavirus vaccine as soon as possible. But I know that the foundation's educational positions have been controversial in terms of Common Core and APPR standards. Nevertheless, the Gates Foundation has tremendous resources to look at best practices and how to effectively integrate technology into our daily educational lives. I think we do that very well right now, and I'm going to remain very hopeful that this partnership will get us to a new normal that works for our district. So we will keep you posted on that as well. There are more information to come on these topics I mentioned. I know Christine will probably be addressing some more of them tonight. And that's it for my president's report. Next up for us is the first reading of a new policy that we need to enact. But I was thinking that Warren and Vicky, who are on the policy committee, might just want to give a brief summary here before we move on.
We have the West Putt?
Ah, that's first on our agenda. That is correct. I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder. And then we will move on to the policy. Okay, well, actually, that involves Vicky as well. So Item 1.111 on our agenda: Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, the WPSBA-proposed 2019-2020 budget, and nominating committee slate, and authorizes the board president to sign the WPSBA annual meeting ballot. Can I have a motion for 1.11? 1.111?
1.111.
Vicky, I think you might be muted. Vicky, can you?
Yes, sorry about that.
That's okay.
And I will move Item 1.111.
Okay, I will second that. Item 1.111. I will say, any questions? But I would love for Vicky just to say a brief message about this, since she is the current president of the Westchester School Boards Association.
I just want to say, this is my third and final year in serving as president on the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association. And I got involved with the association from my first year on this school board, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the two counties of Westchester and Putnam in this capacity. It's a great organization. And so you can see on the slate, I will become the immediate past president. I think that the budget is a very good and responsible one. It's a 0.5% increase from last year. We are operating at a loss and using revenues, so we do have to be mindful. We've increased the dues very minimally. The dues increase represents a range of $4 to $44 per district. And so we think that's responsible in terms of the economic issues taking place now and in terms of the needs of the organization to not operate at a deficit. And the slate is as presented. I think that it's an excellent group of candidates, and I have no doubt that the organization will move forward very effectively. So I'm happy to answer questions. Everything, I think, is pretty clear from the documents that you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Vicky about the budget?
No. I would say one thing, though. Vicky's being very humble. Normally, the person who's elected president of West Putt does it for two years, and they had a person step down, and they asked Vicky, their director, who we all know was on our board, step down, and they asked Vicky if she would stay on an extra year and do more work. And it's just like the president of any organization, school board, town board, whatever, Boy Scouts, any committee you're on, requires a lot more work. And Vicky, of course, said yes, so I'd like to publicly thank her for, again, leading for a third-year West Putt, where she could have just said no and gone off and done what she normally does. But of course, she wouldn't do that, leave them alert. So thank you, Vicky, for all the work you've done for them also.
I just want to say ditto.
Ditto as well. We would all agree with everything that Warren just said. So thank you, Vicky. It's been...
It was a pleasure to do it.
Very lucky for us.
It was a pleasure and a great group of people, always fighting for public education and all of our needs.
Okay, well, thank you. So all in favor of Item 1.111, the West Putt budget? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And Lisa, thank you again for getting me in order. I have my papers in the wrong order here, so I'm back on track now on the agenda. The downside of working at home sometimes. Okay. Moving on to Item 1.112 on our agenda. I will read through this, and it involves, again, the change in the date for our budget and board elections. Whereas Governor Andrew M. Cuomo issued Executive Order Number 202-26 on May 1, 2019, declaring that the annual district meeting for budget vote and school board elections shall be adjourned to June 9, 2020, held remotely by absentee ballot only and setting guidelines therefore. Be it further resolved that Resolution Number 1.111, adopted by the Board of Education on May 8, 2019, setting the date of the annual district meeting, shall be amended to change the date of the 2020 annual district meeting and authorizing the annual district meeting, annual school election budget vote for the Chappaqua Central School District for the 2019-2020 school year to be adjourned from Tuesday, May 19, 2020, to Tuesday, June 19, 2020, to be held remotely by absentee ballot only and with voting hours ending at 5:00 PM, the time when the absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk. And therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. So that is the change for our voting this year. Can I have a motion to approve 1.112?
Go ahead.
Okay, Hillary, can I have a second? I'll second. The change in the vote. Any discussion, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Should, in the first line, I'm just seeing this now, should it be on May 1, 2020, declaring the annual?
Yes, I was just going to, yes.
So should we move to amend?
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
Yes. We need to, Executive Order Number 202-26 on May 1, 2019. I would like to move to amend this.
Amended.
Yes, to amend it to 2020. So can I have a motion to?
Approve it.
I'm looking here. I'm just double-checking something. I'm sorry. Give me a second.
So we have to take the motion off the table and then move again?
Yes.
So I would like to move to take 1.112 off the table. Can I? What are you saying? We have to table it so that we can move it as amended? Because we can move it as amended?
You have to take the motion to approve it. You have to rescind the motion to approve it.
Yes.
Then make a motion.
To table, okay. So not to table, it's to approve it as amended. We have to, yes, that's okay. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to?
Rescind.
Rescind my motion to approve 1.112. I will move to rescind that motion. May I have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I will move to approve 1.112 as amended. Do I have a second to approve it as amended, to change that date from 2019 to 2020?
I second.
A second. Any other discussion? Thank you, Hillary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I believe that concludes the president's report, and we're on to the superintendent's report. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Gosh, I'm sorry about that. But we go here. Okay, so again, these are some photos of students' essentials in quarantine through one of our art classes. I thought this was a really nice project. That these are, you ever see those ads in Us magazines, the essentials in your purse?
Yes.
Interesting what they need around them to be able to effectively...
So what I wanted to talk about, we have some big presentations tonight. Pam Thornton's here for presenting the library budget. Adam Pease will be presenting the RFP for the special education program, based on our process that we have been undertaking since the start of the school year. So we have those two presentations tonight. I wanted to talk a little bit about, just outlining very clearly, the budget process and vote, based on the executive order that was issued last week. Before I do that, and I know Jane had mentioned it, we had, it was like celebration week since the last time we met. We had our principals, it was National Principals Day last Friday, so the admin team, we did some acknowledgements of our principals in our daily Zoom meeting with the assistant principals' help, and we're really grateful for our six principals for helping lead our buildings through this pandemic and what they do every day to help support our families. I mean, they work really hard, good quality people, so I want to publicly thank them. And then, of course, we did our teacher appreciation video. Thank you, Jane, for speaking on behalf of the board and all the kids who participated. It's on our homepage if anyone would like to view it. But it's a real tribute to our staff. And in my piece of my video, while I acknowledged all the hard work that is happening right now because of what we're experiencing as a community, I'm not surprised at all by the approach that our faculty has taken towards instruction, because since I've been here, that's been my experience. Our faculty, they work hard, they're very professional, they care about our kids. And I'm just so honored to be a part of this team here in our district. And then today was National School Nurses Day. And so just want to thank our nurses for everything that they've done. I mean, their interactions with our parents increased tenfold during the second half of the year because of the coronavirus. And until we moved childcare off-site, they were here every day, checking temperatures, making sure that everyone was okay as we supported our first responder and healthcare workers' childcare needs. So I just want to thank them publicly as well. So thank you to those three special groups of people who make our district the great place it is to live and learn. All right, so I just want to very simply talk about the school district budget vote and election. I'm going to simplify a really complicated process we're going to be experiencing here the course of the next month. So the first piece of this is that we have a whole new timeline that we need to follow that's really unprecedented. We've never had an experience like this before, but you know, we'll rise to the occasion and we'll figure this out. So the first thing that I think is the most important is that June 9 is now the vote date. And Jane had explained that. We just passed that resolution that articulates that on the agenda. But I want to pull out some key moments here that I just want to highlight that I think are really important. So the first is our election for the open Board of Education and library seat. So in the past, candidates would have to get paperwork and have that signed by a certain number of people in the community, and they would have to submit those to the district clerk for verification, and then based on the ballot. The process has changed where that signature portion is not necessary. And if people would like to be placed on the ballot for the election, they have to submit their petitions to the district clerk via email by next Monday. So there's no longer a signature requirement. So if anyone has any questions about that, they should contact Lisa by email offline, and she'll be able to help and support you. And then anyone who'd like to be a part of the election that goes through the appropriate process by 5:00 PM on Monday will be able to be placed on the ballot, and that'll be done in alphabetical order. The second important deadline is when are we going to send out all these ballots? So now, we have about 12,000 registered voters, so we have to prepare the ballots, mail them out, and then put a return mechanism within the mailing so that people can simply drop them back in the mailbox and send them to us. So we're hoping that we'll be able to get these ballots out in the mail the week of May 18. But it really depends on the ability of the printer that we're working with to turn the ballots around when we're able to give them the information that they need in order to start producing them, which can't be before Monday, May 11, because we need to firm up our slate of candidates for the library and Board of Education seats. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to send out the ballots to our homes the week of May 18. If not the week of May 18, we anticipate it being early the following week. But there is no deadline by which these ballots have to be mailed. But we're going to mail them as soon as we possibly can. All right, so then we have our budget hearing. So this is a new meeting on the agenda, and this will be Wednesday, May 27, at 7:00 PM. So if people would like to attend the budget hearing virtually, this will be the day and the time that that will happen. And then all ballots would need to be returned to the district in order to be counted in the budget vote and election by 5:00 PM on June 9, 2020. And at 5:00 PM, that's when the tally will start, and the results will be announced. But it's hard to say when that process will be completed because we're not sure how many ballots are going to be returned. So I would just share right now, at this point, anytime after 5:00 PM that evening, we'd be announcing the results of the election and the budget vote. So, and this is a different process for us, but we're going to make it work, and we're going to do the best we can here for our community. We're talking about probably putting a lockbox outside the district office in case people want to manually give us their ballots instead of sending them through the mail, so we'll provide that opportunity. But of course, we'll send these out in enough time where if people return them in a timely fashion, we should be able to receive them by the deadline as well. So this is the process that we're working on right now, based on what happened on Friday, and I think we're in pretty good shape. So I just want to thank Lisa Elsner, because this is consuming a lot of time, and it will continue to consume a lot of time and energy over the past month. But there's no better person to be able to do this than our district clerk, Lisa. So thank you, Lisa, for everything that you've been doing so far to help support us.
You're welcome.
All right, so I just want to share an update. So our kindergarten registration process is working, and it's great. So one of the benefits of the experience that we're having right now is that we're able to try out new systems that maybe we would be using in the future, even if we're all in attendance. So our kindergarten registration process has been streamlined and updated for parents, where they don't have to actually physically walk into the buildings right now. And we're doing a pretty good job registering our families. So this is where we are right now. We're continuing to receive kindergarten registration packets from parents virtually, and we appreciate everybody's efforts. And I do want to recognize Josh and the building administrative team and our building secretaries for being able to facilitate this for the newest members of our community. So we're continuing to accept students, and we're grateful for people that are helping us right now get our numbers in a place where we have an understanding of how many sections we need for the following year. So I did want to acknowledge that as well. And that concludes my superintendent report. So David, if you could please promote Pam, so then I can pull up her budget presentation, and then Pam could present the library budget. And usually, we do this on the same night as the budget hearing, but we thought, not clear on when the budget vote would take place. We felt it was best if we continued the schedule as close as possible to what we initially shared with the community. So Pam was originally scheduled to share the library budget tonight, so we are going to move forward with that presentation. So hi, Pam.
Hi.
All right, so let me just pull up your budget presentation. Shall we give you one more second?
Hey, everybody. Good to see everybody, by the way.
Hi, Pam.
Hi, Pam.
Hi, Pam.
Okay, go ahead, Pam.
Okay. This year is, you know, an unusual year. And we've met, our board met, and we discussed all the different ramifications of what we're doing with the budget. There is an increase. We have asked for an increase. It's not the total increase that's available to us. It's just a few thousand left, but we have some major issues going on with the building. Right now, the total budget request we're going to ask for is $3,314,162. As you can see, the salaries and staff benefits expenditures related to personnel is $2,546,121. And the revenues, again, most of it is, 99% is school district tax, right there. Then the operating expenditures, most of it, again, is, what's, $506,159. It went down a little bit. The majority of the changes, we had an increase in building maintenance and repair because we don't know what we're going to be facing with barriers, protection, et cetera. We dropped a little bit in technology and electricity, and we adjusted some figures downwards based on actual costs or what we anticipated to be reductions. But we did add a capital reserve of $90,000. The reason for that is we have a roof that's been in place since 1978, and we had a major roof report done this year. It has been failing over the years, and now several areas of it have failed completely as we had a huge, major roof leak in the new children's area that we've just constructed. We had that repaired for about $40,000. But the roof itself has two layers, and we know that we have, as we said, extensive study done, and it's going to cost about $800,000 to replace the entire roof. But we can't do that. We know fiscally it's impossible, so we're trying to replace key sections of the roof as we go along, whatever we deem the most critical, which is basically where it's leaking, right into the main part of the library. So the capital reserve of $90,000 is specifically for the roof repairs that we need. And that brings the whole budget again to $3,314,000. Now, the tax levy, as you can see here, we had available carryover from previous years, which we did not use, of $48,434, which is why we were able to add a little bit of money from that. This was carryover from the state that we did not use. So we're able to apply that to this year's tax cap calculation. And we are eligible to have $139,000. We're not using all of that. We are close, we're $137,908. Sorry. And so that's what we're going to use for our tax cap. And we went by this, what the state deemed in the calculations, right there. So that's tax cap. Next. And then the tax analysis. Based on the assessed valuation, the increase per thousand in Newcastle is going to be 14 cents per thousand, or 4.52%. The increase for Mount Pleasant is going to be $2.42 per thousand, which is 5.73%. And that's our presentation. Are there any questions?
Well, Pam, I just want to say thank you so very much to you and the library board and all of the staff. I know you've been keeping some library functions open.
Yes.
People can order books, and they can come and do a drive-by, and you bring them out. So, A, I really want to thank the staff and you and the board for, you know, hanging in there and continuing to serve our community in so many wonderful ways. You do such a great job, and we're very, very grateful.
Thank you, Vicky. It's unprecedented, as you know, and you're experiencing this too at the schools. But for us, you know, we're so used to having people come into our space and we're just all about service. So and luckily, though, we do have skills in technology. So we've moved everything as we can to eBooks, Zoom programs. We still have our programs on Zoom as many as we can. We have story hours you might have seen on our social media. The children's room are doing Storytime as much as they can, nursery rhymes. We're trying to contact and keep as much of our patronage as involved as possible. And we are here to serve everybody. It's just a different way we serve them. And I'm working, I am meeting with the board next week. We're working on a phased reopening, whenever that's available to us, when, you know, the state says we can open again. We're going to try as, you know, whatever phases we can to be safe for both the patrons and the staff. Safety's our priority, but we know people are desperate for reading material, DVDs, whatever they can get, because now's the time. So we're trying to do as much as we can right now. And yeah, thank you, but it's extraordinary. And my staff is extraordinary. They're all working as much as they can from home. And I'm one of the people who comes in and I think there's one other person where the only two, you know, we try to do this to help whatever we can.
Can I ask, have you had savings as a result of having less activity? And I'm wondering, is that how you managed to have the capital reserve? Which I'm glad you can do, by the way, too.
Right. Well, we've actually moved some money from, like, from physical materials to the cloud, virtual. So we've done that. We also aren't spending our program money because our program money is now Zoom and we are still have a few people we have to pay to do Zoom programs. But a lot of it has been done, you know, we don't have this facility anyway to have it in-house. So we're saving money through programs. Our electricity bill down, our fuel bill down, because we're not physically there. Though, we are, we're going to expend some money on, you know, Plexiglas barriers for the public service areas, sanitization and masks and things like that for staff, some PPE for staff. Yeah. But we are fiscally aware and trying to save everything we can to, you know, conserve, because we know it's a difficult time.
Yes. Thank you. I know that Ronnie Diamond wanted to...
Ronnie Diamondstein?
Ronnie Diamondstein wanted to just mention a few things in support of your budget. She's the vice president of the library board. And so I know Adam was going to work out a way to promote Ronnie.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, we're going to do this, but Ronnie's name is not listed. It's a phone number. So we'll promote, I had asked Ronnie to raise her hand during the presentation so we know who she was and I don't see her name listed. So we're going to promote the phone number and then hopefully Ronnie will pop up. There we are. Yes, we found you.
Okay, go Ronnie. Okay.
Here I am. Great. So I'm delighted to be joining you this evening to support Pam, our director, in the presentation of the 2021 Chappaqua School District Library Budget that was approved by the, adopted by our board last month. And on behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I want to say how grateful we are for Pam's extraordinary leadership and for the creativity of the staff and the support of the community. The staff has done an exceptional job in reimagining library services during pause and we've been very happy with the response of the community. I also want to add Pam did a great job in explaining all the different things that we are confronted with that you're also having to deal with. But I want to remind the community that if they're not subscribing to the library newsletter, they can do that by going to the library website, which is chappquallibrary.org, and to follow us on Facebook and on Instagram. So I, and again, I want to thank Jane and Christine for giving me the opportunity of joining you this evening and to address you, the board, and the community.
Thank you so much, Ronnie. So appreciate it.
We appreciate the opportunity and, you know, we're all in this together. So thank you, Jane.
Okay, thanks, Ronnie.
Yeah, we've always been strong partners with the school district. Yeah.
Well, we, everyone, we all miss being together and especially, I know, at the library. I know so many families view that library as a haven. So we're hopeful, I'd like to hear, I'm glad to hear that you do have a plan and I'm sure you will come up with a good one as you can phase back in and we all can. But thank you for giving us an insight into what you're going through now and to what your budget looks like for next year. Does anyone else have any questions for Pam?
Actually, I just, Pam, hi. I wanted to ask for a little clarification on what you spoke to about the roof and the funds for the capital reserve. I just wasn't clear on, are you trying to build up a reserve for a full replacement? Or is that to go towards some segments of replacements? Or I didn't exactly follow.
Yeah, no, it's segments, because there's no way we can build up a reserve to, you know, $800,000 at one hit is insane. So what we're doing, though, is trying to repair, like, this past one was $40,000. We're trying to repair critical key areas that are needed now. So I mean, if there's another $50,000 one, we're going to do that. If there's another $40,000 one, we're going to do that, sections of it. And we already talked to the roofer and the sections. Even when they replace the sections, it will be seamlessly complete. It's like a patchwork quilt, but what will happen is it'll still hold together with the sections that are needed. So we know there's a few other areas that are starting to, you know, seep in and we want to get them repaired as much as we can with the money.
And so the reserve is going to go to the next repaired section?
Yes, the next section of the roof. Right, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And, you know, that might hold us for a while, but we do know eventually the whole roof is going to have to be replaced. But if we can do it in sections, that's great. Then we don't have to have, you know, have to rip everything off and have a huge bill and then downtime too, because we have to have, you know, safety concerns. You got to rip the whole roof off and put it on. There's noise, there's dust, there's all this happening. So no, it's basically, we want to get what we can get at the time that's critical.
And looking ahead, how many, how long do you think these replacements will be done over time? Are you looking at about, I'm going to just throw out, five years or more?
Three to five years. I would say three to five years, because, you know, it just depends on, it's failing now and how long we can hold out on the sections that are failing. But three to five years and try to do it. We did the 40, it was a 30 by 30 foot section of roof. They did it in two days. So, you know, that was great, but we want to be judicious in where we have the sections replaced that are the most critical need, yeah. Three to five years. You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Pam. Thank you, Ronnie, for joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
We miss you all. We miss everybody.
It's nice to see everyone's face again. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Take care, everybody. Be safe.
Bye.
So we're going to transition. Adam and Kristy will be a part of presenting the RFP for your consideration for a special education audit. So I'd like to invite Adam to share his screen. And then when Adam's done presenting, Tony will update the Board of Education on the search process for the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services.
Thanks, Kristy.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Kristy.
Good to see you all.
So Kristy and I are here to update the board on our special education RFP process. And we do have just a couple of slides as refresher slides to go through some of the changes that we've made already. And we wanted to provide an update on that since we had the report from Dr. McGuffic and our response to that report. So happy to have Kristy here in her new position as Director of Special Education to join me in going through these slides. This is how we've organized this presentation. And we just have a slide on the departmental restructure, response to our Dr. McGuffic audit and the recommendations that she made and what we've done so far. And then the bulk of this presentation is about the development of the strategic plan. And most specifically, it's about the RFP process. And I know that the Board of Education has a copy of that RFP document. So we'll spend the bulk of this going through the components, the critical components of that RFP. So Kristy, do you want to take us through the first couple of pieces?
Sure. So as you know, the first part of the PPS plan was the departmental restructure. Yep, there we go. So just to give an update, we're still in our search process for an Assistant Superintendent. However, we are really moving ahead in our interview process for our three CSC chairperson positions, which are, of course, are all psychologists. The interviews have really been going well. And hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to have a firm, three-person CSC chairperson team, which I'm really, really excited and looking forward to. The second part of the PPS plan and part of the response to recommendations, which is part of, came out of the work from Dr. Carolyn McGuffic. The recommended actions have included, of course, the educational testing protocol. And I had gone through this already in our, I think it was our March meeting for the special education budget presentation. But we instituted the testing protocol, retention procedures, the professional development for the administration, which took place in March. We're also already planning another professional development opportunity during Superintendent's Conference Day in October 2020, when we're, God willing, back in school. All of our CSC chairpeople are, of course, administrators or psychologists. Some parents and families here may say this is our tax season, so we are well underway with all of our annual reviews as we continue to plan for the upcoming school year. And of course, the review of all the educational evaluations with psychologists. And we do have to continue and start our internal spot checks of teacher educational evaluations, which will be able to take place once we are back in our buildings. So that's really just, again, a refresher information with some small updates as we've been moving forward.
Can I just note, Kristy, that second bullet, I think our shorthand, might be misleading. That professional development was about the administration of the testing, the assessment. It wasn't professional development for the administration. It appears to be that now that I'm reading it here.
Yeah. And again, that was the focused, the Woodcock Johnson by Dr. John Gerudo in March. And as I had shared, we're continuing to have that area of focus for our October. Correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, I think it's October 13th, which is the Superintendent's Conference Day of the fall of 2020.
That's right. So the third part of this is the strategic, the development of the strategic plan for the PPS department. And we had shared this slide previously with regard to steps that we thought were prudent to take back in the earlier spring when we had Dr. McGuffic with us. And these were the steps. And the first step to developing this plan we recommended was to go forth with a request for proposals for a comprehensive review of our special education department. And so we've taken steps to develop that RFP and we'd be, you know, appreciative of any feedback that you might have. And then you can see the timeline of how that would cascade from here. We're fully aware that our whole educational system has been, you know, disrupted by the current pandemic. And so we felt like it was prudent to take some steps forward with regard to the RFP development and that we could still do that. That's a pretty comprehensive process and takes many months to do. And we felt like we could do that well in the current situation. But we're fully aware that when we launch into the full-blown review of the program, we should wait until we get back into school and have a more stabilized environment. So we'll be prudent about that and be careful about that certainly. But we did think we could take some really good steps towards this goal while we're out and doing distance learning. So I have provided the whole draft of the request for proposal to the board, but I did want to highlight some components. So these slides are all extracts or excerpts from that RFP document. There's a lot of text here and I know you do have a copy of it and you've had a chance to look it over. So the RFP in summary has eight components and these are the components. We follow a similar RFP model to the other RFPs that we regularly do as a district. And so these are the eight components that we have in the RFP. And we're going to just touch on a few of them tonight, you know, and certainly go through the bulk of that document. The first part of this RFP is the overview or the purpose. And you can see that the purpose and intent of this RFP is to solicit proposals from qualified consulting firms to establish a contract to conduct a comprehensive review of special education, preschool through graduation for Chappaqua Central School District. So that's our overall goal and purpose of the RFP. And then it's followed by a description of the project. And you can see, I don't have a comprehensive part of everyone. I don't include all of the pieces of the RFP. I just jumped from number one to number four, but I did try to pull out the points that I thought were most important and most salient for you to review. This bolded section, I think, is the important part in here, which is the recommendations resulting from this project shall highlight how CCSD can more effectively organize its structures, systems, and processes to better support the delivery of services to students with disabilities. So again, that's what we're looking to achieve through this process. And then we go through some of the more granular components of what we'd like to review. We understand this isn't necessarily exhaustive, but we do want the qualified outside consulting firms to know the areas that we'd really like to look at and have more information on. And it's important that this covers the most important parts for us with regard to what we'd like these outside firms to look for. So this first area is about reviewing our staffing and organization of our special education personnel. So this is about our central office administration and support staff organization so we can lead the department and that the department runs with efficiency. But it's also the distribution of our staff across our buildings and throughout our programs. You can see it includes support staff, like psychologists, social workers, et cetera. So this is really a review of our organizational chart and our people resources and how we have those aligned, how we might be able to make improvements there. The second component is about the quality and effectiveness of our teacher pedagogy and also our professional development. So you can see the components in there. Obviously, it's a really important core part of the program. We hold our special educators in very high regard, but we're always looking for ways that we could do better and provide professional learning experiences to our faculty to make sure that we continue to get better each day. The third section is about pre-special education interventions. So this includes things like appropriate identification of students with disabilities, but also our AIS and our response to intervention, our RTI eligibility process monitoring, and also our RTI team effectiveness and consistency across the building. So this will give us a good sense of the pre-special education supports that we provide, the effectiveness of those supports, and then how students transition into special education if it's needed. So the fourth area is reviewing the provisions of a free and appropriate education in special education programs. And you can see the components of that. It's everything from reviewing our philosophy of inclusion and the appropriateness of that philosophy in terms of meeting the needs of all students, a least restrictive environment, CSE processes and procedures, all the way down through IEP development and the use of assistive technology. So the fifth area is about outcomes and transition for students with disabilities. And this is an area that looks at things like academic performance, graduation rates, other measures of success, overall preparedness of students for college or post-high school, career paths, and also the overall compliance with meeting requirements of students' IP's in these areas, as well as the last one, developing student exit summaries. So we're on to the sixth, which is about running an efficient program, doing a cost analysis of the provisions of a comprehensive special education program. So this is about our ability to manage budget and also doing a cost analysis to making sure that we're being fiscally responsible while also providing all the supports that we need to provide for our students so they can access education. And also, there's a bullet about grant eligibility. We do get some money through special education grants and we want to make sure that we are collecting the money that we have access to and using it appropriately. So the seventh one is a bit shorter. It's a pretty straightforward. It's about record-keeping systems in special education. So this is about appropriate maintenance of records, retention of records, reports and documents being confidential, the workflow of those documents and the accuracy, data collection and storage of those documents. And then the last is our community relations and customer service, this idea of including stakeholders, being transparent, having a customer service orientation, making sure that parents have access to score reports and other records that they need to be partners in the education of their children. So in terms of the, so those are the major components that this RFP contains. In terms of the evaluation of the proposals, the Board of Education obviously will be a very important part of this. And you can see the process that we've outlined here with regard to how we would like to select this qualified outside consulting firm. It's our hope that the board will be involved in interviewing these firms that we feel are qualified to do this work and ultimately selecting and approving one of these firms. And that's our entire presentation. We'd certainly be happy to take questions and feedback if you have them.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. I know we've looked at it extensively and we know how hard you all have been working on this and it's much appreciated. I think the whole community will really benefit by this deep dive into it. And I don't have any questions. I've looked at it thoroughly. I don't know if any of the... I don't know if any of the other board members have any questions or comments for Adam or Kristi.
I have one question. It has to do with the scope of the RFP as related to Section 5. It's from preschool through, sorry, I'm locating it on my documents here, through graduation. So I'm wondering exactly what the endpoint of that review would be, because if you look at Section 5, and this is what we would want, it's about outcomes and transition. And under paragraph E, it's overall preparedness for students, of students for college, career, or post-graduation plans. And our ability to assess that, if we don't go beyond graduation to maybe the first two, one, two, or three years, or four years beyond. I mean, I don't know what the, what the span of time would be, but I'm just wondering if the scope is something to be extended a bit in order to assess transitions for this, you know, for this particular task.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good suggestion, Vicky. Thank you. It's, it's not unusual in, in cases like this that a firm might contact some graduates and do some surveys, for example, even some focus groups with regard to students that have already graduated in their experience and, and their readiness as they transition. So we could, we could certainly make an adjustment there and make some clarify, put some clarification in.
Right. So just to be clear, the firm would then be responsible for suggesting changes or additions to our process of assessing transition, transition outcomes?
Yes.
Okay.
I, so, go ahead, Hillary.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, Adam, you addressed some of the questions on, you know, our current situation and the fact that we're, we're going to start with some of the process. And I guess my only question is, in terms of the, the timelines on this, and, and this might be through the sort of follow-up interview process, but just to make sure that, that whoever ends up doing this work knows that there has to be some flexibility and fluidity in terms of, we need to be obviously in the buildings for them to evaluate some of the, the programs that are taking place in the buildings. And I guess sort of one question that stems from that is, do you think there's any benefit? And obviously, this, this partly depends on what our timing looks like and when we're allowed back in, to having any part of this process looked at in terms of distance learning? Like, is there, in your mind, is there any value to, to starting any of this evaluation through the distance learning lens? Or do we want to really try to wait until we're, we're back in the buildings and, and have that be, you know, the entirety of it?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. We've been thinking about it. I, I think we, it would be prudent to wait till the educational system stabilizes a bit. You know, Cuomo just came out with some information as recently as yesterday, if not the day before, about kind of a new normal for education. And we don't know what that will look like long-term, but I think we do need to wait for some, a better, a better sense of when we will stabilize and what that'll look like. I, I, we were thinking in terms of timeline, these firms will have to collect, whichever is the, ultimately, the one we choose, will have to collect a lot of data. There will be a lot of backend work that we'll have to do, that even if we jump into a process, there's a lot of work. If our work with one consulting firm with our review of the counseling department that we're going through right now, if that's any indication, there's a lot of, a lot of work that's done without even the need for access to our campuses and our students and our counselors in real time while they're in the counseling, you know, in, in their role as counselors in the school. So that was our hope, to be efficient in that way. But, but I think it's a point well made and well taken that the, the question will be, and it will be one surely that we revisit in the fall, when is it, when is the right time to actually jump in? Like, we have a, a firm that we're, we're pretty committed to. And we'll have to be flexible with regard to the contract. Ultimately, this will be reduced to the development of a contract, and we'll make sure that that contract has appropriate flexibility and parameters so we can work in any contingency that we might imagine with regard to disruption of school or even our timeline.
Great. Thank you. So I, I had a couple of questions and, and comments. And just, Adam, I did, I did send you an email, so you do have these thoughts already memorialized. But I was wondering if there's going to be, or if there is any interest in looking at some trends when it comes to the classification rates, declassification rates? And another thing that I know we, we hear about frequently, and that's the parentally placed out of district of our classified students. I, I'm not sure if this is the right place, but there might be some insights in there, especially in that particular population.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good suggestion. It, it is an important component, and we should probably work it in and be explicit that we, we want some feedback on it.
And I, I know you, we referred, Vicky alluded to this, but looking at the scope, and it says up to graduation, but it's my understanding that everybody may not graduate. So I'm wondering if it might be able to be more explicit that it's not, it's not graduation, it's when they have transitioned out. I'm just a little hesitant of using the word graduation, knowing that that may not be, that may not be an endpoint for, for some.
I think that there, there could possibly be some shift in wording on that to incorporate some of the credentials that a student can exit with beyond a region's or a local diploma. So I think that that can also be incorporated, particularly with the CEDAS, which really is intended to be a supplement to the local regions, but those who are exiting with the skills and achievement commencement credential, definitely look at the, see if we can separate out some of those two bullet areas for that.
And, great. Thank you, Kristi. And then my, my last question is in Section 3. It's letter I, where it's a, talking about the determination on how the screening tests are going to be selected. I didn't know if there was going to be a look in at not just how the tests are selected, but the, the actual administration of those, those tests, or if we've kind of settled that with Dr. McGuffek's work.
You know, I think that, that, Adam, if you don't mind, I'm going to jump in for a second. I think that part of the work that we've already started in looking at the administration, particularly this past March, continuing, moving forward with professional development on the administration. We're in the process of purchasing the Wyatt, you know, the up, there's an updated Wyatt. We'll have further professional development when that's made available. So it wasn't necessarily included in this process just because I, we thought that we were moving forward with it. But I think we can go back and look to ensure that it's captured and that we continue to provide the professional development necessary for the evaluations.
A suggestion might be to, to direct the scope to include a review of her findings as well.
I'm interested in seeing if there's a way to leverage an assessment system that our teachers uses that minimizes discretion. Right? So I, I think that's a really valid question across the district K-12. And can that look differently for our high school students and maybe even our middle school students? Can they, we operate a, a different program that takes out that discretionary piece that could impact the results of particular students based on who the administrator is?
That's good feedback.
Thank you. I'm really, I'm very glad that we're not letting the New York pause or distance learning slow us down from doing what we can do now. So thank you for all the work you've put into this.
Tony, did you want to update everybody on the Assistant Superintendent search?
Great. Thank you, Christine. So as you know, several months ago, we embarked on a process to identify a candidate for our newly created Assistant Superintendent for PPS position. We partnered with HYA, which is a nationally renowned educational search firm. And they worked with us last year, actually, when we hired a new principal for Seven Bridges. So we partnered with them and went through a process to develop the sort of profile of an ideal candidate for that position based on different focus groups. We started the search. In partnering with the search firm, they begin the process by doing screening interviews, by reaching out to people in the region that they know of, people who have been successful in this capacity in other districts. After they go through a screening process, they identify slated candidates that they bring forward to us as a leadership team. And we went through the process of identifying those, those candidates, interviewing those candidates, and went through a thorough process after that. That included multiple rounds, multiple interviews, writing tasks, and site visit. Board members participated in that as well. So, and, and it's a challenging task, right? Because we're not looking for someone just to do work in, in the area of special education. We're looking for someone who understands counseling, who understands, you know, health services with our nurses and RTI. So it's a pretty robust position that requires someone with, with a vision for what that might look like down the road and how it intersects and works in partnership with our broader curricular experiences and teaching and learning experiences. So through that process, we identified a candidate that we feel really strongly about, that we think would be a nice addition to our team and would enhance the work in not only special education, but broader in our community. Due to some obligations that that individual has, it's precluded us from having a July 1 start date with that individual. So knowing that, we see that as a strong fit. We are moving forward with looking for an interim Assistant Superintendent for PPS to begin with us on July 1st. We partnered again with HYA. They are committed to helping us find someone for that position on July 1st. So we have a couple of candidates that we're going to be considering for that. And hopefully, we'll have an update at the next board meeting.
That sounds great. Thank you, Tony.
Okay, so then I guess I would, I would just ask if the Board has any additional thoughts, if they could send those to Adam by midday tomorrow so we can prepare to have the RFP publicized. That would be great.
I just want to say, I think it was a really thorough job with the RFP. And obviously, the district's been really committed to going through this process with special education. And I think it's going to result in some really good information and some really good support for all of our students. So I, I appreciate all the work that was put into it, Adam and Kristi and everyone else. So I, I think we're going to end up with a really good result here. So I think it's terrific. Thank you.
Right. And just so our community understands the process, we would have multiple, hopefully, multiple agencies applying to be our contracted employee. And then the Board of Education would interview those agencies. And then they would, they would select the, the person who they feel best meets their needs. And then at a future meeting, we would be announcing who that would be and appointing them through resolution. So just so everyone understands the process. So, thank you. And that's the end of my superintendent's report.
Okay. All right. So we are moving on to committee reports. I know we are going to be discussing a new policy later on. So I know the Policy Committee has met. So Vicky or Warren, if you want to discuss the policy that we're going to have a first reading of this evening?
Do you want me to pull it up right now?
Sure.
Okay.
It is a first reading, but it's quite lengthy. So we will not be reading it word for word, but everyone obviously can access it.
If you like, I could try to summarize it.
Yes, just even, I know that we had mentioned it last week that, that we needed to pass this policy. This, all schools are going to have to do this regarding new regulations in terms of safety and security and data privacy. So if you want to go ahead and just hit the highlights so everyone can, can peruse through it if they wish. But obviously, this is something that we need to enact for everyone's safety.
Warren, is that okay?
That's perfect, Vicky.
All right. So, so obviously, as you read, it addresses the requirements of, regarding data security and breach of private information. And it's the requirements of State Technology Law, Section 208, which defines what private information is. So pursuant to some recently adopted state regulations, no later than July 1, each school district has to adopt and publish a data security and privacy policy for personally identifiable information for students as defined in the FERPA regulations and for teachers and principals regarding confidential APPR results linked to individuals. So the policy also implements the requirements of ED Law, Section 2D and its regulations. And it aligns with the National Institute for Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework. That's a whole mouthful, but it's a NIST cybersecurity framework. And it also addresses data privacy protections that are set forth in Section 2D. In addition, the district has to publish its data security and privacy policy on its website and has to provide notice of the policy to the staff. So 2D also directs the State Education Department to develop and disseminate a model policy on, on the data security and privacy. So when they do that and release it, we may have to make adjustments to this policy. But to avoid having separate policies addressing different types of informational breaches, so this policy meets requirements of both State Technology Law as well as ED Law, Section 2D, and the regulations in separate sections. So I could just very briefly describe what the sections are. The first section on ED Law basically follows the NIST cybersecurity frameworks. It designates a data protection officer. It defines personally identifiable information, provides that there will be no selling and marketing of the information, and it minimizes the collection and transmission of the information. There's a Parents' Bill of Rights regarding data privacy and security. It addresses third-party contracts to ensure that their data security plans conform to our policy and standards. It addresses training, reporting, and notification of breaches. Then the section on State Technology Law, Section 208, has a definition of personal information. It addresses reporting of breaches to the superintendent and the development of procedures. Then we have two other sections. One is on labor law with a definition of personally identifiable, identifiable information. And it addresses the school district's duty to protect and not communicate that information. And finally, there is the S.H.I.E.L.D. law, which defines directory information. So that is the policy in a nutshell.
No, that's great.
Warren, Warren, do you have anything?
The only, the only I would say is we, you know, we took a look at this during Policy Committee, and we made some adjustments, but there was, there weren't a lot of things we could change because most of it is statute. So.
I mean, it is, it's a deep policy.
Yeah.
It is, but we're in good shape to be able to adhere to this policy because of Josh's work with his team. But a lot of this is, is prescriptive through the regulations and the applicable laws. And there's some adjustments we'll probably have to make to some other policies based on the adoption of this, much like we've done in the past, to make sure that they all respect the intent of each other. But, but in order to do that, this policy really has to be passed.
So what led to happen is we'd have our second reading, and if you're comfortable with it, we would pass it. And then we'd have to bring other policies forward that would have to be adjusted based on this new language. Right.
Could I ask a question for clarification, Vicky? Is this policy 5086 or 8635? That was my question.
We're going to play around with the numbers. I, I don't want to commit right now. I don't think the number of the policy matters so much. We may have to align policies. But right now, this is our information and data privacy, security and breach, and notification policy. I don't, I'm not, I, I don't want to speak to what exact number we're going to end up with.
Right now, I know it's in our policy, it's on our agenda as policy 5086, and it's in documentation. So I think maybe what's seeing on our screen, it might have had a norm, a different number earlier. But in our agenda and backup documents, it's, it's maybe now at 5086. That's what I'm guessing.
Yeah, it was, it was just, I wanted to make sure that there weren't two things going on here. No, it's just the one policy. It's just the one policy.
I, I agree, Holly. So we'll, we'll have to, we'll clarify that before it's approved for, at the second reading and make sure that we have been, have it numbered so it doesn't appear in two different places.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other committee reports? I know that Communications has not met. Has there been anything else anyone needs to report at this time?
No facilities.
No facilities. Okay. We are going to move on to our public comment period. For those of you have, who have been attending our meetings, you know that Adam has worked out a way to facilitate this. If you are an attendee and would like to make a comment, you raise your hand, and you get promoted to a panelist. We ask that everyone have video and audio capabilities. and audio capabilities. As long as we can see you and hear you, you can make a three-minute statement as per our usual time guidelines. And as always, that we, board members have the option to have a discussion regarding matters discussed during public comment at the end of the public comment period. So I am looking now at our attendees, and I say that there is a hand up for Jeffrey Muster. So if Jeffrey could be promoted over to a panelist, that would be great. Okay, we can see and hear you, Jeffrey.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. I actually have two parts to my remarks tonight. First, the two questions that came to me from members of the public who didn't, we'll say they weren't shaking. They didn't want to ask the questions themselves. One, I think it was on slide four of the RFP, you were talking about inclusion. Is it, is it, was unclear to this person whether or not inclusion is now on the table as, as whether or not we might, the district might get away from you. And then two, somebody asked me about grades for seniors and why we're not going to, ask me to ask you, why we're not going to pass fail and still make them do senior experience. Take that as you see fit. Then I guess my own remarks, apologies to Lisa, the district clerk. We have a unique, this is my civics rant. It's a unique opportunity here for members of the public. We normally get about 1,200 people who vote in a school district election. That's about 10%. I think there's an opportunity here to reverse that, to get 90% of the people to, to vote and , and, and apply. I think that it's important. I mean, well, voting is a, is a right, not an obligation. I think that, my personal opinion is everybody should get out there and vote. With everybody getting the 12,000 or so absentee ballots going out and everybody getting one, I think it's important that everybody use that opportunity to apply on a, on the board candidates, and, but more importantly, applying on the budget. The budget itself is a roadmap of what the district and the board thinks are the priorities for the next school year. That's how you allocate your money, by what you think is a priority. And also on a, whether or not you're applying, and whether or not you think this is a fiscally responsible budget. So I'm just urging everybody to take this unique opportunity to get out there and use it. And I'd also urge the lead of women voters who traditionally had a candidate night to do that again, and to do it sooner rather than later. Because it's a mail-in vote, previously those candidate nights have been held a week before the election. In this case, because people will be mailing them in, I think an informed voter is a better voter, I would urge the lead of women voters if they're going to do a candidate's night, and I think it's now, it's needed now more than ever, since we can't, we have to social distance, that they do it on a timely basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I do not see any other attendees on our list. So that will conclude our public comment period. Does anyone, I know we have the opportunity to comment on any matters discussed. Does anyone want to discuss anything or comment on?
Sure. I will, if that's okay with everybody.
Go right ahead.
We're looking, review of our entire special education program that includes our inclusive practices. So that doesn't necessarily mean we're abandoning our philosophy. But I mean, I think we're very clear that we believe that inclusion is a civil rights issue for our students. But in order to take a comprehensive approach at evaluating our whole program, we're going to evaluate every aspect of our program. So that's, that's why that slide is represented in that way. And then the second piece is, I'm confused about that senior question because there is a pass fail, pass, not a pass fail, there is a pass option for all of our students in the high school for quarter four. That is their option to exercise if they choose to. I think it's probably the smartest way to have handled quarter four. So if there is a parent out there that has a question about that, they, all they have to do is email the appropriate assistant principal or email Mr. Casilia, and we'll certainly help explain the grading process to them, maybe in a different way if they don't, if they didn't understand the communication that went out from the high school principal about two weeks ago regarding this. So, all right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We can move on to three approvals or ratifications. Item 3.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the April 29, 2020 special board meeting. I will move item 3.1. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Item 3.2, there is no approval here. We went over the first read of our new data privacy and security policy. So that will be a second read on our next agenda at our next meeting. Okay, we're on to item four, recommended action personnel, 4.1 instructional, 4.2 instruct, non-instructural. There's nothing on our agenda for that today. On to item five, recommended action other. This is our consent agenda. This is where we make effective use of our time. We have items 5.1 through 5.5 this evening. We normally take them together. Some of the items have been discussed, although I will see if we can move this, but I'd like to read through item 5.3. We discussed this earlier, which is our amended notice of the annual public hearing, board vote, budget vote, library elections, et cetera. We actually passed this notice several meetings back, and that notice gives our clerk Lisa the ability to amend it, which she did. And so she can just amend it. We don't necessarily have to read through it again, but there have been so many changes related to this election and procedure. And I think it would be helpful to go through it when we get to that. So I would like to read that so everyone can understand. But first, let's just take a motion. I can read it during our discussion of the consent agenda. But first, let me ask for a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.6, our consent agenda. Will someone move to?
I will.
Okay, Holly, second. Hillary. And discussion. Before I go to, jump to 5.3, does anyone have any items that they wish to discuss on this consent agenda?
Jane, I just want to update the board. We, we adjusted a date.
Yes.
The same issue in 5.3 that we had in the beginning. So I had David adjust it.
Yes, I was going to say before I read that, that we have a, it was adjusted in real time. So we don't have to approve it as amended. So online and what everyone can see now would be an adjusted date on there. So we are, we are all good.
Jane, I'm sorry, could, would you mind just confirming that the date is in the first paragraph?
Yes, the date was in the first paragraph originally. It said that, that we would hold a public hearing, which we mentioned earlier at tonight's meeting, that our public hearing on the budget would be Wednesday, May 27, 2020. Our original copy of the agenda said 2019, but that has now been fixed.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that I.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Which date was corrected.
Okay. So before we approve our consent agenda, I am going to do as quickly as possible a read of 5.3 so people understand. And again, obviously, this will be up on our website. 5.3, notice of annual public hearing on budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jane, did we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda?
We did, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay, yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Okay.
That's okay, no problem. Notice of annual public hearing on budget, annual meeting, school district election, library election and vote. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Chappaqua Central School District, Westchester County, New York, will hold a public hearing on the budget at the Academic Commons at the Horace Greeley High School, Chappaqua, New York, by video conference on Wednesday, May 27, 2020, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of presenting the budget document for the 20, 2020, excuse me, for the 2020/21 school year. Notice is further given that a copy of the statement of the amount of money which will be required for school district purposes during the 2020/21 school year, the budget exclusive of public monies, may be obtained by any resident of the district effective May 15, 2020, on the district website. A real property tax exemption report prepared in accordance with section 495 of the real property tax law will be annexed to any budget of which it will form a part and shall be posted on the district's website. Notice is further given that the annual district meeting, election of members of the Board of Education and library trustees, and vote on the school district and library budgets will be held on Tuesday, June 9, 2020, exclusively using absentee ballots until 5:00 PM prevailing time to vote, colon, A, to elect two members to the Board of Education, three-year terms commencing July 1, 2020, and expiring on June 30, 2023; B, to vote upon the appropriation of the necessary funds to meet the estimated expenditures for the school district purposes for the 2020/21 school year, the budget; C, to vote upon the appropriation of the necessary funds for the 2020/21 fiscal year of the Chappaqua Central School District Public Library, the library budget; D, to elect one member to the Board of Trustees of the Chappaqua Central School District Public Library, five-year term commencing July 1, 2020, and expiring June 30, 2025; E, to vote on any other proposition legally proposed. Notice is further given that in light of the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting closure of school buildings, and in an effort to maintain health and safety, the district clerk will not be registering voters of the district. If a voter has registered to vote with the school district and has voted at all, and has voted at an annual or special school district meeting within the last four calendar years after June 1, 2016, he or she is eligible to vote at this election and vote. If a voter is currently registered to vote with the Westchester County Board of Elections, she, he is also eligible to vote in this election and vote. All other persons who wish to vote must register to vote with the Westchester County Board of Elections by mail or online through the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles website at, I will not read that website. It's a hyperlink which you can find on our website. Any person possessing all of the following qualifications may register to vote. One is a citizen of the United States, and two is 18 years of age of old or older, and three, has resided in the school district for a period of 30 days immediately preceding the day of the election and vote. Notice, notice is further given that absentee ballots will be sent to all known registered district voters. Absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk by no later than 5:00 PM prevailing time on June 9, 2020. Notice is further given that military voters may apply to register as a qualified voter of the district and/or apply for a military ballot by contacting the district clerk at telephone 914-238-7200, extension 1002, or email lisaelsner@ccsd.ws to receive an application to register as a qualified voter of the district and/or to receive a ballot for the annual meeting on June 9, 2020. The military voter may indicate their preference for receiving the registration application by mail, by facsimile, or email. The application to register and/or for a ballot must be received by the district clerk no later than 5:00 PM on May 14, 2020. Military ballots will be mailed or otherwise distributed no later than 25 days before the election. Military ballots must be received by the district clerk 5:00 PM on election day and show a cancellation mark of the US Postal Service or a foreign country's postal service, or show a dated endorsement of receipt by another agency of the US government or be signed and dated by the military voter and one witness thereof, with a date which is ascertained to be not later than the day before the election. A list of all persons to whom military ballots shall have been issued will be available to qualified voters of the district upon request until the day of the annual school district election and vote. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk is hereby authorized to amend the notice of public hearing on the budget and annual meeting, election and vote from time to time, as in her discretion such amendment may be required. And be it further resolved that the, that the school district clerk shall cause the notices set forth above to be published two times within the four weeks preceding the annual meeting, election and vote, the first such notice to be published at least 28 days prior to the election and vote in accordance with section 2004 of the education law. Board of Education, Chappaqua Central School District, Westchester County, New York, by Lisa K. Elsner, district clerk. That's dated May 6, 2020, to be published May 12, 2020, and June 2, 2020. Okay.
Wow.
Lisa, thank you for doing that. Sorry that you all had to listen to me try and read that really quickly. So that is our consent agenda for the evening. Any questions, comments before we go to a final vote? Okay. All in favor of our consent agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. No facilities report. We do have financials under item 7.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the revenue status report for March 2020. Can I have a motion for 7.1?
I move.
A second?
Aye.
Hillary, seconds. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jane, before we go into notice of future meetings, I've been thinking about that policy issue. And I'm, I'm going to have David realign the numbers. So people who, if they're looking at the policy connected, you know, are confused. So I'll do that offline.
Okay, that would be great.
At the time.
Okay, thank you so much. Notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, May 20. It's 7:30 PM, which will be our tenured teacher recognition. And our meeting following that, as we've discussed, Wednesday, May 27, 2020, 7:00 PM, our budget hearing. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight at 9:14 PM?
I move.
Okay. Warren may have a second. Holly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you so much and good night, everyone.